I've seen it before when into closed session.
Okay.
This is what they want to be speaking about.
Hmm, over five billion dollars.
Catherine, I'm looking on our closed session and don't see that name. What item is it?
Item K.
Well, good morning. Welcome to our June 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting in Tulare County. Would you please stand with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have a number of presentations this morning. We just received a wonderful book here that has great information in it. We'll call upon our ag commissioner Gary Conkle to step up and share this wonderful information with us.
All right. Don't get things fired up.
We're already fired up.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gary Conkle. I'm the ag commissioner and the sealer of weights and measures. Our office is at 4437 South Laspena over in Tulare. And this is one of the fun things that we do every year. I've done this quite a lot and the commissioners that have come before me always really enjoy coming over and talking to you about the crop report. It's one of those sort of feel-good things that we like to do. There's some caveats. You'll see them up here on the screen. One of the things is that I want to emphasize, and I do every year, that this is just gross value. They don't represent any net profit. I've given a lot of examples before, but the fact is, you could be losing money on a commodity and we'd still report the gross value of that commodity. It doesn't mean you made anything on it. I want to thank the producers and processors and packers that help us to get all this information because we can only do that if they trust us and cooperate with us and provide that kind of yield and financial information all year long, and they do. And I want to recognize Tricia Stever. Tricia's in the audience here from the farmyard, right there. Is Ed here? Is Ed in the back? There he is, right there, Ed. That relationship, I think, is a good one and works well for both us and the growers in the county. So it's many of those people that provide us with the information we need to do this. I want to introduce Samantha Derbrow. She's here. She actually does most of the work. Samantha, right, wave your hand or stand up or do something like that. And then Marilyn Kenoshida, the deputy is in charge of the statistics, exclusion, detection, fruit inspection, all that kind of stuff. It's her division that puts this together. And some of you have probably heard me say, "It's like doing your income tax for four months in a row." It's really quite a chore. And Samantha's taken that on, done a yeoman job. I go in there with just disgusting requests, you know, I worry about stuff, and she's already taking care of whatever it is that I think of at the time. So I really want to thank her for doing that. People have asked me why we do this. Well, one reason is required by law. So, you know, don't want to be a criminal. But the bigger reason is it's used for all kinds of things. Our legislators use it for making decisions, for emphasizing the value of agriculture and so forth. Policymakers use it for a variety of things. Grower organizations, insurance companies, attorneys, news media use it when we have a disaster claim. We have a devastating freeze or something like that, and you'll hear this dollar loss and that kind of thing. That's all based on the value from our crop report. And I also really want to thank Tulare County duplicating. Several years ago, we used to farm this out, you know, to a commercial printer. And several years ago, duplicating had the capability to move it in-house. It did a couple of things. It saved us a lot of money and actually the quality really improved. So I cannot say enough good about the people at County duplicating. They have been absolutely wonderful to work with and put this together just in a very short time. Quality job, so thank them. All right. These are just some facts. I sound like a Geico commercial. Some fun facts about Tulare County. But I put this up here because one of the things that we hear a lot is when people throughout the nation talk about Tulare County, they describe us as this, you know, this big place with giant corporate farms, whatever that means. And the facts are that the average size of our farm is 223 acres, but far and away the biggest component, if you break out different segments of the size of farms, our largest component by far, two, over 2,000 of our farms, falls in the area of 10 to 49 acres. Those are family farms. And so I like to emphasize that. Yeah, we do have some big ones, but we have, you know, in the citrus business, we have an awful lot of five and 10 acre blocks, which I think is worth emphasizing every year. We only have 200 farms that have more than 1,000 acres. So it's true, we have a few big ones, but it's also true that Tulare County is primarily relatively smaller family farms. And then you see some of the other figures up there. How can you have total cropland that's greater than irrigated cropland? Well, the truth is, you can grow crops on some land that's not irrigated in some years. So we have some dry land farming down in District 5, of course. And, you know, if we have anything like a normal year, they can actually do some dry land farming, a little dry land farming in Tulare County. So here's the thing that we're all wanting to know, and it takes a while for this to load, so I have to sort of kill some time while these figures come on the board. The total value of commodities, all commodities together in Tulare County for the 2008 year. And should be a drum roll or something going on right now while this fills up. You can see the effects of some of the freezes in some of those. There we go, 5.018 billion. That's billion with a B. It's the first time we've ever been over $5 billion. One of the things that we do is I actually review the average growth for 10 years. And so if you do that for the last 10-year period, the average growth was about 6%. And this reflects about 6% growth. One time I just plotted the Consumer Price Index to just see how we followed along. And for a long time, it followed that curve pretty steadily. So the growth has been very steady. Nobody has asked me yet, but Fresno is doing their crop report today. And I've spoken with the Fresno ag commissioner, and they will be clearly the number one, well, number one in terms of gross value, ag county for the 2008 crop year. I would expect us to be still strong second. We won't know for sure until Kern and Monterey, some of the other leading ag counties come out with their values, but I would expect Tulare County to remain number two. And keep in mind that we're talking about the 2008 crop year. 2009, I'll mention that a little bit, but we're going to see some, I think, some changes in 2009. That was a little bit of a surprise. I'm often asked by the media what surprised me, and I was surprised that we had an up year in 2008. And I'll talk a little bit about that. All right, top five commodities. Milk, of course. Milk is always going to be the top number one commodity in Tulare County. If you look into there, we're just 1.79 billion with a B. And for the last several years, I've talked about milk being the only commodity that I'm aware of anywhere that's worth over a billion dollars by itself. Now, one of the things, you've heard some of the stories about milk prices recently. And in looking at this, I'm going to talk a little bit about what Leonard used to call winners and losers. But keep in mind, what we're talking about is 2008. If you look at milk prices for the whole of 2008, 2007 was record year for milk prices, so way over $18 a hundredweight. And if you look at 2008, for the most of 2008, up until about October, milk prices were pretty strong. And then from October on, they fell off a cliff. That graph is, you could almost plot it against the economy. And it's just as though things are not too bad, not too bad, not too bad in cahoom. And so 2009 does not look good. And milk prices now, I think, are getting around $10 a hundredweight or something like that. Compare that against over $18 that we had in the early part of 2008. So I want to emphasize that. We're talking about effects that, for the most part, persisted in the early part of 2008. Anyway, milk is far and away the number one commodity. It will be till the end of time and the sun burns out, as far as I know. Naval and Valencia oranges, 592 million. Oranges were up quite a bit, and I'll talk when I talk about the winners and losers thing here in a little bit. And cattle and calves, very strong. That's predominantly, you know, cows that are rotated out of the dairy business are sold for beef. And then we have the foothill cattle ranches, too. But those two together make Tulare County one of the leading producers of cattle and calves in California. Grapes have been strong for a long time. They've been in the top three or four for many, many, many years. Then alfalfa, hay and silage, of course, that goes hand in hand with the dairy business. We have to raise a lot of feed crops to feed our animals and to sell to the neighboring producers. So that's the big five. And then we usually put this slide up here, too. It's just for fun. But we have, Tulare County has quite a few million-dollar crops. In fact, there were 45 in what we call the million-dollar club this year. Of those, 26 gained in value in 2008. I'll just emphasize a couple of things. I like to talk about blueberries because they're kind of a new commodity in Tulare County. And it was Manuel Jimenez from the Cooperative Extension Service that, you know, sort of led the way to bringing those to our area. And they're doing really well. I mean, they're slowly climbing up the ladder here, and if anybody's eating any of them, hey, I'm recommending Tulare County blueberries to anybody that likes them. And that's a great thing. They were up from 23rd last year, so that's remarkable. The other thing that's remarkable, and this is just me being silly again, see number 26, that little teeny font? I did that because Assemblywoman Connie Conway wanted me to talk about dried plums instead of prunes. And so I list them like that. Now, the truth is, many of our prunes are what they call French prunes, and they're actually marketed fresh. So prunes is still okay. But I threw that in there to appease our Assemblywoman. And then the other thing is, and the previous District 5 ag commissioner, always, or ag commissioner, supervisor, always wanted to know how manure was doing. And in fact, it was 39th with $2.8 million value. And I don't know if I want to continue, if supervisor in us would like to continue that, but that was a tradition. In fact, the Assistant CIO said she would send Jim a copy of the crop report so he would know how that ranked. All right. Here and there, we talk about what my predecessor used to call winners and loser. These are the crops with the greatest dollar gain. And a little bit of a surprise, although it shouldn't be, if you read a lot of the media, is corn. Corn was up $67 million, a little over that. While we planted a lot of additional acreage in 2008, and if you read anything at all about demand, you'll see feed prices were sky-high. Well, that argues for planting more corn. The frenzy of satisfying, you know, the biofuels market argued for planting more corn. All of that stuff really increased our acreage. And prices were up some, too. So when you get that combination of quite a lot more acreage and some more price, you end up with a winner. So corn was the leading gainer for 2008. Oranges, if you look at oranges, they gained $59 million. Well, how can that be? The thing you have to remember is you have to contrast that with 2007. And 2007, January 2007, started out with a pretty serious freeze, probably the third most serious freeze in the last 15 years or so. So really, what's happening there is they're being compared against the year that was a down year because of the freeze. Tangerines have two things going for them. One is the popularity of seedless mandarins, which the marketplace has decided they really like. And so there's a lot more acreage of tangerines coming into production. Prices are very good for those crops, easy peelers, they call them. And then the other thing is, they also have a component of recovering from the previous freeze. So that allows them to be one of the big gainers. Alfalfa goes right along with the dairy industry and the high price of feed crops. And then wheat and grain, same thing. Wheat and grain, actually, wheat grain the previous year was number five on the list of those that lost quite a lot. So that expresses some of the rebound in the price and desirability of feed crops for Tulare County. Okay, crops with the biggest decrease. It's not politically correct to call them losers, but milk will always be either the largest gainer or the largest loser. It doesn't have to change very much to have a huge impact. And I'm already dreading what this slide will look like next year when we're up here talking about it. But milk lost $101 million. So in 2007, I already talked about, we had record prices. So it's not unexpected that 2008 would be lower. The yields were increased, but they weren't enough to counteract the, for the whole year, $1.30 per hundredweight decrease in price. Walnuts came down quite a little bit, and they've been a stable crop for years and years. So we had increased acreage and yields, but the total value decreased because the price dropped 48%. That price gets them back to about 2005 values, which is kind of a surprise to me. Olives have struggled for many years now. They can have the occasional, what the olive commission calls a healing year, but by and large, olives are a commodity that struggled for quite a long time. And Tulare County for many years used to be the leading producer of olives in California, and that's decreased over time. Nectarines, many of us know generations of families that have been in the nectarine business that have sold out to other entities or consolidated their operations just because the tree fruit business has struggled for the last few years. So that's not too much of a surprise, but it's sort of sad because, you know, most of the nectarines in the world come within, I'm told, within about 50 miles of the Dinuba area. And then cotton, that's not a surprise either. We used to grow about 140,000 acres of cotton. We're down to just a few thousand acres now. That's continued to decline for a long, long time. Used to be a top-five commodity. Like I said earlier, 19 of the $45 million crops decreased compared to those that increased. This slide, I put this up just for fun, but one of the success stories is the amount of commodities that we export every year. And you can see that exports have been just a growth industry in Tulare County. You can really see where the freezes hit. You know, you freeze in December '90, '91, you don't have much oranges to export. Same thing, freeze in December '98, so '99 gets hurt. And then you freeze in '07, and since that was in '07, you see the effect in '07. So you can really see the effect of freezes against our exports. But if you look at '08, that's a record year for the amount of fruit that we export from Tulare County. This has been a success story. So if you export commodities, that also helps your domestic price. And we're really proud to see that, although Marilyn, you know, she will tell you that the export workload could drive the deputy in that division crazy. We do, you know, an average year, we'll do more than 23,000 export inspections, and so those people are hustling. This is just, I put in a top 10 destinations here, and there's not too much to talk about there. China continues to be a really popular export destination. Korea's either leader or second. One of the surprises, or the changes this year is United Arab Emirates. Exports to that section of the world have increased dramatically. They take a lot of nut crops, grapes, citrus and stone fruit, and that kind of thing. So we exported to 75 different countries in 2008. This is just a summary that we do, all counties do, summary by commodity. And you'll see just by commodity group how we fared. Fruit and nuts still lead barely over livestock products, and livestock products, of course, reflects the milk industry. But those two big components are responsible for the bulk of our crop report. Seven of these categories were up compared to two that were down. Some of them are really dramatically, like seed crops, you know, they increased 143%. That's not particularly significant because we don't do a lot of seed crops. And so where there are contracts to grow them, people grow them. And where you don't have a contract, you don't plant, you'll plant something else. So even though it's pretty volatile and dramatic, it's not particularly significant against the whole balance of commodities. The thing that was good in 2008 was the strength of things like field crops and so forth. And, you know, I've heard a lot of people complain about feed prices. Well, that's, yeah, if you buy a lot of feed, that's negative. If you sell a lot of feed, that's a positive. So, you know, it is what it is. And 2008, on balance, I think, would be an okay year. The early part of it was certainly okay. But for almost every commodity, if you plot those against time, boy, you'll see a dive in October that we'll be living with when we're up here talking about the 2009 crop report. And I always conclude with, you know, there are other counties, there's one other county that maybe has more gross ag product than we do, but I don't know of any county that's more exclusively agriculturally based than we are. And so it's a good opportunity to reflect on the importance of the ag engine that drives our entire economy here. And to thank you, your board, for your support for agribusiness. I hear that wherever I go. Some of the planning decisions are tough to make, and they have always been conducted in support of agribusiness. And so that sort of consistency in support for farming, I think, is something that we should all take a lot of pride in. And then this is your opportunity to ask me any kind of questions you'd like about the crop report.
Questions, board?
I had a question. You intimated that you thought things might be different next year relative to county's rankings, I think. And I suspect you're going to talk about the west side of Fresno County, but I was curious if you might expand a little bit.
Yeah. I don't know if the ranking of counties will change real dramatically, but I would be amazed if we weren't down quite a bit. And I would be amazed if Fresno wasn't down quite a bit. They're going to suffer because much of the west side's taken out of production by what's been called a regulatory drought. They just, you've seen the pictures on TV, communities like Mendota and so forth that are devastated by the lack of water. That will certainly hurt Fresno. You know, sometimes, I'm sorry that we don't have a big west side component. If you look at a map of how Fresno County goes, and you look at us, our west side's Kings County. Well, there's times that we suffer from that, you know, when the west side was doing very well, that helps them. When they get shut off, we don't feel that effect like they do because we don't have that west side. That will certainly work against Fresno. But also working against Tulare will be the milk prices. And because milk is such a huge component for us, I don't know how that will shake out, but I would predict dramatic reductions for both of our counties. It's not a pleasant thing to say, it just reflects reality.
Gary, I see that manure's up about $197.
I'm glad to hear you say that, and Mr. Maples will be proud.
One thing that I noticed, Gary, is you hear a lot about farmland coming out of production. You mentioned that. I look here and see that we added 65,000 acres this year. Is next year's going to flip?
You know, it comes and goes. And what happens, we see this a lot, and people, it's a true statement to say that farmland in California is being lost at a pretty alarming rate. That's a true statement. And we've had people, you know, like researchers come in and look at our Tulare County for a while. And so we have a dynamic going on here that I'm not sure that every other place does. We talked about manure, and we do that kind of jokingly, but you can use the byproducts from dairy operations to bring back into production what you and I would refer to as alkali flats, you know, places that weren't farmed before. And so what happens is, we tend to pave over some of the best farmland close to the cities, and then we tend to bring into production farmland that hadn't been in production before as you incorporate dairy manure and so forth and bring back organic material into areas that were traditionally not farmed. So we come and go. It varies up and down over time. It's fair to say we're losing our very best farmland typically, but it's also fair to say that we create some farmland out of places that weren't, just because we're able to incorporate that organic matter and turn alkali flats into productive farmland. It may not be quite as high-grade as, you know, you always talk about walnut orchards being the best farmland, and they're typically close to the cities and get developed. But, you know, I don't know what to predict for next year. It may go down some. We have some benefits here that some others don't have. When the water gets short, like it or don't, we're able to actually overdraft groundwater and keep things alive, which some jurisdictions can't do. It's not a pleasant thing to do, but it works to our advantage. But I'm really not, I guess I'm not answering your question because I'm really not comfortable predicting what will happen next year. It depends on how, it's more actually about economics than it is about water availability for us.
I'd rather hear that answer than we're going to lose all the acreage.
Yeah.
Appreciate the answer. Any other questions, comments, board?
All right. Well, thanks a million.
Gary, thank you very much. Overall, wonderful report. Good to see that we're up.
One thing, Mr. Schreiber, I find interesting, too, is we look at the bearing acres versus the non-bearing acres, and you see some crops where there are small acreages and there's no acreage on the horizon, and you have other acres that are really growing, like almonds are really growing.
Yeah.
So you would anticipate that in the future, they're going to rise up on that chart. But it's a fascinating study, just to see the dynamic of agriculture's always been dynamic. And I thought it was interesting, your comment about dairies will always be number one, but dairies have not always been number one in this county.
Not always.
And, you know, it is a dynamic process, so things do change.
And like you mentioned, almond acreage is increasing. It's increasing all over the state. It's a popular crop right now. And think about that. Well, they require pollination. That argues for bringing more apiary business into the county and for good apiary prices. So everything's kind of interconnected there. All right? Thank you very much.
You actually just triggered one question for me. When you talked about apiary situation, what's going on with the beehives? Is that okay? I don't know, I was just.
Well, I assume you're talking about colony collapse disorder. There's a lot of media talk about that. And we, there has been some of that that affects us in Tulare County, probably less so than other parts of the world. Colony collapse disorder is a worldwide phenomenon. It's not just in California. It's not just in the United States. Great Britain, for example, is struggling with that. I've talked to some beekeepers that have experienced it. And for those who don't know, colony collapse disorder is really kind of a bizarre, poorly-understood condition of bees. And what happens is, beekeeper's got a, you know, colony of bees, he goes and checks his hives, they look pretty good. He goes back tomorrow, and suddenly they're gone, and most of them are gone, and for no reason. They're not dead in the hive, they're not dead around the hive like you'd get if you had a pesticide kill, something like that. Nobody knows what happens to them. For whatever happens to them, they don't get back to the hive. And that's a worldwide phenomenon. We've had some of that here. Now, we have so far been able to get adequate numbers of colonies for pollination. What's happened is, especially the nationwide supply of bees gets impacted by colony collapse disorder, it costs you more to get them here. It's supply and demand. So far, we've been able to get adequate colonies of bees, and we do colony strength inspections, where you actually take the top off hive, look in, make sure that, you know, a lot of bees are home and working for you. And so far, we have been largely unaffected, well, the price has certainly been affected, but we've been able to get adequate numbers of bees, is what I'm trying to say. So yes, there has been some effect. It hasn't been as dramatic in Tulare County as it has in some other parts of the United States, and certainly not as other parts of the world.
Great, thank you very much, Gary.
Okay? Thanks a million.
Thanks, Gary.
Item number two, we get to highlight one of our partnerships here in a program. I'd like to introduce Mr. Solins, who will then, I guess, in turn, introduce Kathy Lamp, who will give a presentation on the Eat Fit program.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. Jim Solins, UC Cooperative Extension, share of the building with Gary at 4437 South Laspena. Members of the board, Mr. Rousseau. My compliments to the ag commissioner and their excellent ag report. I did happen to be visiting with a retired ag commissioner last night from Fresno County, and there was a gentleman's bet about who would be first. Unfortunately, I didn't realize that the bet had already been made, so I lost. I would like to also point out, Mr. Conkle indicated, and my compliments to the industry as well, he indicated that this is not a profitability measurement, but we don't want to overlook that that is a 1.5 to 3 economic value to the county. That makes our ag industry a terrific economic engine of $7.5 to $15 billion, according to which commodity and which circuitry economic value you want to look at. But that also brings an irony in that I got a real hard question one day when we had some Russian ministry agricultural officials visiting. And we were talking about this terrific economic engine that we have in Tulare County and in the southern San Joaquin Valley, our food system that we produce. And yet, they had been touring, and they asked, well, how is it that in a county that has such a large, or San Joaquin Valley has such a large ag industry, that we have so much hunger? And it also brought the irony of, why is it that, on one hand, we have hunger, but yet we have obesity and diabetes in those same characteristics in so many of our communities? And one of our goals or missions in Cooperative Extension that may not be as as recognized as well as our, the work we do in agriculture and some of the work that we do at 4H, is our Family and Consumer Science, our nutrition program. And they've had some very innovative programs. And I, with it, I'd like to introduce Kathy Lamp, our Family and Consumer Science advisor. And she'll talk about a program that's won both a national and a state award on our Eat Fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I'm really pleased to, to be here this morning and share a little information with you about this, one of our really wonderful programs, Eat Fit, which is a nutrition and physical activity curriculum for middle school students. As you know, obesity is a growing epidemic, no pen intended, in California and across the nation. And Tulare County unfortunately doesn't escape this either. We have higher than average rates of obesity and overweight in our youth. Thirty-six percent of seventh graders have an unhealthy weight in Tulare County. The school setting is an ideal setting for students to learn healthy nutrition and physical activity habits and to prevent obesity and chronic diseases. But most of our schools here in Tulare County are under a lot of pressure to improve test scores. And this can leave very little time for students to learn healthy life skills. Well, with our Eat Fit curriculum, we're able to address both of these at the same time. And what we did was, we conducted a study here in Tulare County with students at Golden Oak School in Visalia and Sundale School in Tulare that showed that students can learn better nutrition and physical activity habits while at the same time learning math and language art skills. And this was the first study in the nation that looked at whether a health curriculum that's tied with the education content standards could improve academic performance. Well, nearly all of the students in our study improved their test scores, and whether it was in algebra and functions, mathematical reasoning, statistics, or listening and speaking skills. And this is because these concepts are woven throughout the curriculum. And students actually learn these things through hands-on activities. They learn by doing. So, for instance, they learn about rates, which is an algebra and function skill, while doing various activities and then taking their heart rate and seeing how doing the activities affects their heart rate. So, it makes it much more, more real for them, and I think this is one of the reasons why the, the curriculum is so successful. Students also improve their nutrition and physical activity habits through the curriculum. And there's a, there's several components to this. We have a, an online component of the curriculum where students go on and they can have their diet analyzed. And then, that helps them set their, their diet goals, and they set physical activity goals. And then, you each have a copy of the student workbook, and you can see that that's very colorful and fun and engaging. And the teachers don't have to make copies of worksheets for the students that are, that cost the, the school money. So, in the past six years, we've extended this program to 37 schools in Tulare County and reached 3,200 youth. And this fall, we plan to expand the program even, even more. The photograph here is the student, the sixth graders at Sundale School who participated in the, in the study. Channel 30 did a very nice, they came and visited during the study several times and did a very nice extensive report on the, on the study and interviewed the students, who were just as cute as could be. All of this is provided to the schools, this and several other curriculums. We have curriculums that, that start in preschool and go all the way through high school. Is provided through our, free of charge, through our FISNEP Nutrition Education Program. And this is a matching program. We match state and county dollars to bring federal dollars to Tulare County to support the program. Most of the match comes from teacher time. So, we keep track of the time that teachers spend teaching this curriculum and are able to pull in those federal dollars for the program. But what this slide shows is the county contribution towards the more than $250,000 in federal funding that we receive. The work that we did here in Tulare County was the first in the nation that looked at whether or not a health curriculum could boost academic performance and improve student test scores. Because of this work, we received state and national recognition through these two awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have any questions? Wonderful program. It's nice to have a, have programs like this highlighted. We do have a proclamation that we would like to present to you, and we'll, we'll meet Have a proclamation signed by all of the board members, recognizing the University of California Cooperative Extension's efforts for implementing the Eat Fit program in Tulare County. 3,200 students, that's quite impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation from the Health and Human Services Agency. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jason Britt. I'm from the Tulare Works Division of Health and Human Services Agency. Mr. Chairman and the board, it's our privilege to bring to you a short presentation with our partner, the UC Cooperative Extension, Kathy Lamp again. A couple months ago, Kathy and Joanne Snell, who is a member of our staff in the Health Department, approached Tulare Works about partnering in a innovative pilot project that's available from the state that's going to potentially help low-income families increase consumption of fresh fruits and vegetables. And of course, the Eat Fit program in the schools goes right along with that. And so, Kathy's going to give us a little more information on that, and then we'll be happy to take any questions at the end.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. I'm back. Well, I'd like to share with you some information as an opportunity for Tulare County to participate in the California Healthy Purchase Pilot Program. We are requesting that you consider throwing our hat into the ring, if you will. This summer, up to seven counties will be chosen to participate at no cost to the county in this pilot program. The purpose, the purpose of the Healthy Purchase Pilot is to make fresh fruits and vegetables more affordable to low-income residents. And I've prepared a handout that has some information about the background and benefits of the, of the program. The pilot is made possible by Assembly Bill 2384, which authorized the program. And Assembly Bill 2726 deals with funding for the pilot, some of which may come from the 2008 Farm Bill. There are benefits to participation for several sectors of Tulare County. One of the strategies is to help small grocers in this Healthy Purchase Pilot in low-income communities increase their ability to offer more fresh produce. You know, there's several places in Tulare County of substantial population where it's very difficult to, to buy fresh produce. And so, improving small grocers' ability to do this would be one way to, to extend produce to more of our residents here in Tulare County. But the main strategy is to rebate part of the cost of the fruits and vegetables back onto the EBT card, allowing families that use food stamps to purchase more fruits and vegetables with their EBT card. The pilot will also increase the demand for fruits and vegetables, which hopefully would benefit our local growers. And eating more fruits and vegetables reduces the risk of overweight and chronic disease, and hopefully reducing healthcare costs in the future. If Tulare County is chosen, all of the retail food outlets that take the EBT card, whether it be supermarkets, small grocers, farmers' markets, would be part, part of the pilot, and anyone shopping with their EBT card would benefit. As I mentioned earlier, up to seven counties will be chosen to participate in the pilot, and that decision will be made sometime this summer. The Department of Public Health will be looking for counties with above and below average rates of food stamp participation, a county with above-average rates of poverty, food insecurity, or obesity, a rural and an urban county, mid-sized counties, and counties affected by chronic disease like diabetes and heart disease. Tulare County has above-average rates of food stamp participation and above-average rates of poverty, food insecurity, obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. So, I think Tulare County would be an ideal choice for the, for the pilot. The last thing I'd like to mention is that here in Tulare County, we have a very effective coalition of agencies that will contribute to the success of the pilot program. The Tulare County Nutrition Coalition is made up of healthcare agencies, educational institutions, social service agencies, and nonprofit organizations. Tulare County also has a very successful Central California Regional Obesity Prevention Program, known as CROP. And together, the agencies and programs in the Tulare County Nutrition Coalition and CROP will be able to reach tens of thousands of low-income families with information about the pilot. With that, we hope you will consider signing a letter to Dr. Horton, the Director of the California Department of Public Health, that asks that they consider Tulare County when making the decision about which counties in California will participate in the Healthy Purchase Pilot. Thank you.
Any questions? One, one quick question. You know, it talks about the EBT card. Would it be an automatic thing? You swipe the card, it would automatically add the 10 to 30 cents per dollar of that item that was purchased? An automatic thing, or does it come the next month?
I think it would be an automatic thing. When they showed an example, that's how we understand it will work.
Oh, that's great.
I was just going to comment and say that, you know, this is a great program under any circumstances, but even more so today when we look at the kinds of cuts being contemplated in Sacramento, healthy families, different things, insurance reimbursement rates and so forth, anything that will extend those limited dollars, which this does, leveraging these dollars so they get more food for the dollar, is something which we would want to encourage, as well as, of course, the healthy consumption of food. So, nothing like good old money to urge people to do the right thing.
Wonderful program. Any other comments, questions?
Yes. Yesterday, by chance, I read a report on sales tax in Tulare County. And what really surprised me was the fast food sales tax has not gone down. People still aren't eating at home. And hopefully, this program will help people eat at home, because I think that most fast foods restaurants, you, you don't see vegetables.
Right.
You do not see fruits. So, somehow, we can enter also into a campaign as to what does a combination meal equate to at a home-cooked meal, the, the quality of food that you can receive at home versus getting one of these combination meals. Now, I probably have the fast food industry upset with me, but there are a lot of benefits, not only for obesity, diabetes, for eating at home, but there are also social benefits from interacting with your family at the dinner table.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I think it is a great program.
Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Worthley. Set by Supervisor Ennis. Unanimous. Great. Let's, let's go get it, bring it home. Thank you. We, as we look at the agenda, it's, it will be my intention to do items four and five, then take the consent calendar, and then we'll have our, do our public hearings after we do those items, which should not take very long. Next item we have on our agenda is item number four, public comments. If there's anyone wishing to address the board on an item that is not on our agenda today, but under the board's preview, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will move to Board of Supervisor matters, item number five. Supervisor Ennis.
Nothing to say this morning. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last week, we attended the CSAC conference, and we heard several different presentations on SB 375, which is the greenhouse gas follow-up bill from AB 32. And it was quite surprising to me that every time the supervisor started asking pointed questions about what's coming down in this law, is that the presenters, and usually, they were representative of the state of California, backed off and kept saying it was voluntary. And most of the things they were looking at, hard, looking at closely, were related like vehicle miles and truck traffic and those type of issues. But we know it's far more than vehicle miles, truck traffic, and it also goes into planning. But it's very difficult to get a straight answer of what they're, what they're doing in Sacramento with AB, with SB 375. But I'm making a presentation next week on 375, and I'm not sure what the presentation is, because I'm not, we didn't learn much from the state about what 375, how 375 was really going to impact us. Last week, we had a relay for life in Exeter, which was very successful. And the relay for life is a fundraiser for cancer research. And I thought the city of Exeter and the citizens of Exeter really put on a great program, and it was very successful. Saturday night, there was a fundraiser for the group who's opposing the power lines through farmland. And this was a very successful event with over 250 people in attendance. And a lot of energized people who would rather see the power lines that Edison is proposing move to Route 3 to Stokes Mountain. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Worthley.
Just to comment on the, the, I thought a significant thing we learned at the CSAC conference was that there's been a great concern about the 1A being suspended, which would be $2 billion, taking out of local governments, counties, cities, special districts as a loan to the state of California. But to do that, they, it takes a two-thirds majority vote from the legislature. So, in our meeting with the minority leader in the Senate, it, it was pretty clear that that's not something which is easily accomplished. And the other thing was, is we had the legislative analysts from California speak to us, looking at out-years, this is not a short-term problem for the state of California financially, it's a long-term problem. So, borrowing money this year that has to be paid back within three years at interest does not help the state of California at all, because they have serious financial problems going out a number of years. And so, I guess I felt a little better after we left that that probably will not happen, although I am quite certain that we will see this, the Williamson Act subvention funds go away, which was about 3.2 million. And that, that reflects a 10% cut. We used to get more like 3.7 million dollars of subvention from the state of California. So, I have every expectation that that will disappear in the coming budget negotiations. But the 1A issue was, I think, good news for Tulare County and for all of our partners, the cities and other municipalities and local governmental agencies. and cities and other municipalities and local governmental agencies.
I kind of relate that almost to paying for a bill you have today with a credit card.
It is.
Not very.
With a very short, you know, payment refund, you have to pay it back within three years with the interest.
Not very wise, okay. Supervisor Vanderpool.
Last night, we had a very successful event. The South County Gang Awareness Forum happened last night at the Pixley School. We had between 200 and 300 residents attend the presentation, and I, first of all, would like to thank Staff Jed Trennbaum and Eric Coyne did an excellent job, and Jeff Forbes too, for putting together the event. It was very successful, and, you know, we had a lot of people there, and we had some great stories shared, and got a lot of questions answered, and I think people really learned a lot. So it was a very positive event, and hopefully, we will be able to bring more gang awareness type of events to the South County and other areas in the county, because I do think they make a difference. Also, I would like to say that yesterday, the chairman submitted a letter to the governor's office on behalf of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. As many of you may have heard, the governor is talking about closing quite a few state parks, and we have requested that Allensworth State Park not be closed as a part of his suggestions or recommendations due to the special nature of the park and the facility and what it means to that community. So I would just like to say that publicly, that we have been fighting to try to keep that park open, even though the governor is recommending the closure of many parks throughout the state. So, that's what I had.
Thank you. I wanted to make one quick addition to something Supervisor Ashida added on the extra relay-for-life. He said they did very well. They actually raised nearly three times their goal in donations, so they did not very well, but they did very, very, very well. One report from myself would be the progress on the new agricultural museum. We have an executive committee formed with a specific assigned task as to content, programming, and we have various partners, including the Tulare County Office of Education, who has taken a major role in helping us to provide programming. The Tulare County Historical Society, we actually have the Allensworth State Park Society as a partner now, so we have some very interested partners that are pushing forward, and we look forward to the museum being completed by the mid-September date and mid-October, combining the opening of the museum with our 100-year anniversary of the Mooney Grove Park. So some exciting things are happening with the new museum, and very excited to see that project move forward, as well as our partners. We'll now go to the consent calendar. Items number 21 and 50 will be pulled, and we'll have no action taken. We will pull items 14, 15, 16, and 28 for separate consideration. And are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar by either the board or the public for separate consideration? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Ennis, is unanimous. We'll now move to item number 14, which has been requested to be pulled by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a quick comment about that. I requested that we pull item number 14. In my first interview with the Tulare County Grand Jury, they mentioned some training that was needed on behalf of some special districts and boards within Tulare County, just to help educate them as far as how to run a meeting, some items about the Brown Act, what their function is, how to replace members when they become vacant or dysfunctional. And I just think that this is, it was very important that we addressed that recommendation from the Grand Jury, because when you have these special districts and boards that are elected, if they're not functioning, then what purpose do they serve? And obviously, the constituents that are supposed to be served by those boards are not receiving the service. So I made the recommendation to, actually, the board made the recommendation to County Council, that we get this, get something like this going. And it's sort of a government 101 type of a forum, and I appreciate County Council running with that and trying to put this thing together free of charge to the people that serve on these different boards and groups. So, Council?
Thank you Supervisor. Just for your board's information, it wouldn't be completely free of charge to you, which is why it's on your board's agenda. There would be cost for duplicating. The plan is to do this in the evening, so people can come after work, and we would want to feed them, so they couldn't escape. There is a small cost there. We also are unsure about our attendance. We could have 10 people or 300 people that want to appear, so it may be that we repeat this. To clarify regarding the training, there are organizations that give training to people who want to become members of boards and commissions. The Office of Education is one, they're doing one in July. Also, I think it's United Way does one for people for nonprofit boards and commissions. Once you get on the board, there are other organizations that are available to assist you, but there is nobody to really tell you about them. And while I frequently say to the Grand Jury, to people who call, that the board is not the overseer of special districts, frankly, the state is not going to be stepping in to provide this assistance. And I do think, I agree with Supervisor Vanderpool, I think it would be a benefit to your constituents who are served by these various boards, commissions, et cetera. There are, Rita Woodard, I know, is not in the audience, and the number changes all the time, but there are more than 158 of them. So I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one comment. We would just like to make sure that we are able to contact every member of the boards and commissions throughout Tulare County, to try to get the maximum amount of attendance possible, so I think that would go through the clerk, correct?
We have spoken with the clerk, who very graciously offered to be part of the faculty to discuss the issue of vacancy appointments, and also with the county's press information officer regarding not just mailing out, but also getting stories in local newspapers, et cetera. One thing I did not mention, and it is in the agenda item, I think, and that is that I suggested, when Supervisor Vanderpool first raised this to me, that I reach out to members of the local Tulare County Bar, who advise these boards and commissions. Every person I asked absolutely, you know, said, "I'll be there." So we have a faculty, essentially. It's not going to be all Tulare County Council time to put this together, and it also will give differing points of view, as you're well aware. If you get two lawyers in a room, you've probably got two different opinions.
Great. Great opportunity for some wonderful, much-needed training. I'll move approval of this item.
Second.
By Vanderpool, seconded by Worthley. It's unanimous. Item 15 is the first five issue. I will recuse myself, and there's no other discussion that I need to have.
Item 15, proven amendment to agreement regarding first five Tulare counties, or motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. I'll cast your votes. Vote is unanimous, four, zero. Cox absent from the dais, and he is now returning.
Thank you. Item number 16 is an item that's been requested by Supervisor Ashida to be pulled and discussed separately.
I asked the item 16 to be pulled to be discussed and explained, because apparently there's some media, maybe some media miscommunication on what this item involves, and one thing I'd like to point out, that in our agenda item, it shows that Mr. Smalley, the executive director, looks like he's the king of the hill, but he's not. Mr. Smalley reports to the Tulare County Association of Board of Directors. So the authority really is transferred to Tulare County Association of Governments. So, Mr. Smalley?
Board, Ted Smalley, Executive Director, Tulare County Association of Governments. Before you today is a resolution, and I would like to do a very quick clarification on a number of items. First of all, this is being done for independence purposes. TCAG actually as an agency has been an independent agency since the 1970s. This has been under significant discussion for a number of years. This is also a function of how a metropolitan planning organization works throughout the state, and this was the desire of the eight cities and the Board of Supervisors, of which you all sit on the TCAG board. First of all, one minor correction, it's actually 13 and a half positions. One of the items, positions was a duplicate, and I have let staff know it's technically 5293, is counted twice, a position number, and staff is aware of that. So when you take action, we recommend that, we don't have two of those positions. Having said that, there are no new positions being created by this action. Same staff positions that are currently there today, it would be under a new department. And as Supervisor Ashida appropriately pointed out, we actually answer not only to this board, but to actually all eight cities and the county together. So when we go to get something approved, it actually is a lot more review and more folks looking over things such as our budget isn't just approved by the Board of Supervisors, but also all eight cities approve our budget, and the federal government approves how we operate. So with that, I hope that if there's any questions, most of you know that TCAG, its function, or its primary function, is to manage state and federal transportation dollars, and to conduct regional planning, and also with the passage of Measure R, to manage the Measure R program. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And I think the clarification was, and I was asked, why are these people losing their jobs? And there are no jobs being lost. This is just a movement of the same people on paper from one organization's oversight to another. So there are no jobs being lost through this action.
That's correct. I was actually asked the opposite way. I was asked, why is TCAG doubling? So neither one of those are correct.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I move approval for item 16 with the correction of 13.5 positions.
Second.
Moved by Ashida, seconded by Vanderpool. Is unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Smalley.
Thank you, Ted.
I asked for item 28 to be pulled, just by way, I think this is something important, needs to be highlighted, the county's loop program, you read in the newspapers quite often about the city of Visalia's loop program, and the county has actually dedicated more buses and more funds to the county-wide loop program than the city of Visalia has. We have some great partnerships in the works with the cities, or the areas of Cutler, Rosy, Goshen, Ivanhoe. The Loop Bus has provided service to the Patterson Track, Linnell Camp, several unincorporated communities of the county that actually bring youth into the cities for existing youth programs or sports programs, so very effective program. I just thought needed to be highlighted, and to let the supervisors know, we do now have, by way of this action item, there will be an application form that can be filled out, it can be obtained online, or copies can be received at the RMA. I know Mr. Dan Fox, our transit director, I see him in back, I don't see all of them, but I see part of him, is put this item together, and it's very exciting to have this bus available to youth out in the unincorporated community of the county. So that's really all I had to say about that. Any other comments or questions about the Loop Bus? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. By Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Unanimous, thank you very much, and let's use that bus, supervisors. Okay, we'll now move to our timed items. Item number six is a request by our CAO to consider a $30 fee for an Assessment Appeals Board application. Bennett?
Good morning. Kristen Bennett, Assistant County Administrative Officer. The County Administrative Office Clerk of the Board is tasked with the administrative duties of the Assessment Appeals process, enters as a staff of the Assessment Appeals Board. Apparently, there are no fees being charged related to these duties. Section 16 of Article 13 of the California Constitution provides for the establishment of fees to the, related to the duties of the Assessment Appeals Board. Over the last three years, there have been significant increase in changed assessment applications. In fiscal year 2006/7, 182 applications were filed. In fiscal year 2007/8, 1,583 applications were filed, and to date for fiscal year 2008/9, 3,523 applications have been filed. It is estimated that 80% of the clerk's time is spent accepting applications, ensuring completeness, verifying timeliness, and responding to inquiries from the applicants. The process of the application includes interaction with the assessor's office, scheduling the matter as appropriate for the Assessment Appeals Board, and closeout of the application. Based on the time and cost associated with the processing of each application, it is recommended that a nonrefundable fee of $30 be established for each application for changed assessment. The auditor's office has reviewed and approved the proposed fee calculation. Five counties, San Francisco, San Luis Obispo, San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Stanislaw are charging nonrefundable fees of $30 for each application, and several other counties are working to establish fees. The clerk of the Assessment Appeals Board estimates 1,500 applications will be received in fiscal year 2009/10. The new fee would generate $45,000 of revenue to offset the associated expenditures. With your approval, the ordinance will take effect in 30 days. The revised application form listing the new fee requires approval by the State Board of Equalization. The fee would be implemented for the new filing period beginning July 2nd. This concludes the staff report, and be happy to respond to questions.
Any questions? Seeing no que, I do want to make one quick comment. Received a, an email yesterday from someone I know who represents people as they go through this appeal process, and was very, received very positive comments about the clerks that are actually working in this program. It's typically when we receive an email or a phone call, it's about someone that's not happy with a county service. This email was someone relating how happy they were with the service that were being provided by the clerks in regards to the Assessment Appeals, how they've been very helpful, they've been very prompt in taking care of issues and working people through the process. So it was a very wonderful, rare, positive note to receive, and I wanted to pass that information on to the clerks that actually worked with this, that the services that are being provided are appreciated by the public, and they're very, and this person was very happy and delighted with the service and with the attitudes of those that were providing the service.
They must have got their taxes reduced, too.
I think they're, they're still in the middle of the process. She said she was actually representing three folks.
And Mr. Chairman, I have one comment, too. I know that the media had a misconception about the, how much the fee was and why it was being charged, and made it seem like we were trying to make, create our own profitable entity within the clerk's office, and that is not the case. This fee is being charged to cover the cost of the clerk's time, and I just want to clarify that publicly, so, thank you.
Well, this is something the board has been bearing the burden of over the years, and it was a relatively small number of applicants, but now we're looking at 10 times the applicants, and it's creating a workload issue on the clerks that we do have working on this. So with that being said, although I see, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the board for consideration.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Move approval by Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, and is unanimous. Thank you again to our clerks that work on this, job well done. Okay, we'll next move to item number seven, which is a request from our Resource Management Agency to receive public comment on obtaining Federal Transit Administration Section 5311 grant funding.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Brew with the Resource Management Agency. On April 7 of 2009, a public hearing was held on this item. Your board received no public comments and approved the submittal of two grant application to purchase six CNG buses and 18 fare boxes. This is an administrative procedure to comply with the Grant Application Guide line with regards to the 30-day public notice requirements. Therefore, a public hearing is necessary to fulfill the state requirement. With that, I, any question?
Any questions at the board?
Well, I just want to make the comment, some folks may have
Well, I just want to make the comment, some folks may have thought we were this was an additional set of vehicles. This is the ones we've already approved, and this is to comply with the requirements of notice and public input. Just so that folks understand, we're not, you know, buying additional buses, we're buying what the grant provided for initially, and this is just the reason for this hearing today.
This is just a notification period that we have to have to comply with the state requirements.
If you look at the county match and the federal funds that are being provided, it twenty-three thousand dollars in local match money to receive seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is, I would say, a good deal. So no other questions? We will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, if you would please step forward, state your name and address for the record. There's got to be somebody.
Fox is standing in the side.
Mr. Fox is standing by the side. I think he's just waiting to know that he's got new buses coming on the way. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move for approval.
Second by Supervisor Innes, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. Unanimous. Do we have an idea of when we'll be receiving these brand-new buses?
We're looking at the next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to our next public hearing. Item number eight, which is a request from our Resource Management Agency to approve application for funding from the State of California Tiers One and Two Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Mr. Hader. And thank you for the inch-and-a-half thick of material to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. William Hader, Assistant Director, RMA. This request before you this morning is for a State of California Tiers One and Two Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant with the required public hearing. Lori Mercer will be giving the requisite presentation that the state requires of this all the time. I, at this time, would like to acknowledge my staff's effort for this grant. This is by far the largest housing-related grant we have ever applied for. It's the tune of four million ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and also represents a partnership with some of the local cities, specifically Farmersville, Lindsay, and Porterville. Reason I would like to acknowledge my staff's efforts to put this together, this has been the most difficult application we've ever worked on. The landscape is constantly changing from Washington on what the rules and regulations are. Chairman Cox, you asked me the other day about prevailing wage rates, and just after we talked, they changed their mind and said training programs are exempt. So this thing has been a moving target. It's been very stressful on staff to prepare. This is one of a series of applications we will be coming to your board for in the next three months. And I will turn it over to Lori to let her do her thing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Lori Mercer, Resource Management Agency, Community Development and Redevelopment Division. What I want to explain, this program is under the umbrella of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is why we have the requirement for the citizen participation and to hold a public hearing. It is not a it is not the CDBG program, however. To get this out and into the public's hands as quick as possible, they've utilized the CDBG program because it's already a place that's established. And as always, I hope this morning finds you all well. The Board of Supervisors is holding this public hearing to review and receive comments and to solicit input regarding the authorization to submit an application for funding from the State of California Tiers One and Two Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Spanish translation was advertised, however, no one requested these services. An attendance roster is being passed around while signing is voluntary. We would appreciate you all doing so. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program authorized under Title III of Division B of the Housing and Economic Recovery Act of two thousand eight, the HERA, provides emergency assistance to state and local governments to acquire and redevelop foreclosed properties that might otherwise become sources of abandonment and blight within their communities. NSP provides grants to purchase foreclosed or abandoned homes and to rehabilitate, resell, or redevelop these homes in order to stabilize neighborhoods and stem the decline of house values of neighboring homes. Projects funded with NSP allocations must carry out the national objective of benefit to low, moderate, and middle-income households. These are households with incomes up to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. The NSP application is a joint venture with the cities of Lindsay, Porterville, and Tulare, with the county acting as lead entity. The NSP program requires a minimum application of one million dollars, which prevented the cities from applying individually. Approval of a joint powers agreement is also requested in this for this reason. NSP funding will be used to purchase and rehabilitate homes, resident and residential properties that have been abandoned or foreclosed upon in order to sell such properties and to provide direct homeownership assistance and housing counseling for those for those seeking to take part in the activity. Housing assisted with NSP funds will provide permanent housing to the LMMI, the Low, Moderate, and Middle-Income Persons, in order to meet this national objective. NSP funds will also be used to establish land banks for homes that have been foreclosed upon and to demolish blighted structures as well as redevelop demolished or vacant NSP funding must be utilized within areas of greatest need based upon criteria the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, utilized to make in making funding funding allocations. This criteria includes the number and percentage of homes foreclosed home foreclosures, the number and percentages of homes financed by subprime mortgage-related loans, and the number and percentages of homes in default or decline. As of this morning, the number of bank-owned properties within Tulare County were one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. The number of defaults, one thousand nine hundred and two. And the number of homes up for auction or trustee sale, nine hundred and fifty-four. Just as of this morning. That's a moving target. It changes daily. Areas of greatest need in which activities will be targeted include Cutler-Rosy, Dinuba, Early Mart, Farmersville, Ivanhoe, Lindsay, Porterville, and Tulare. It is recommended today that the county submit a joint NSP application with the cities of Lindsay, Porterville, and Tulare for four million ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars in funding to be distributed as follows. Under the activity financing mechanisms, one million two hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars in the target areas of Dinuba, Farmersville, Porterville, Tulare, Cutler-Rosy, Ivanhoe, and Early Mart. Under the purchase and rehabilitation activity, one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the target areas of Lindsay, Porterville, Tulare, Cutler-Rosy, Ivanhoe, and Early Mart. Land banking activity, three hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars for Porterville and Tulare. Demolition activity, one hundred and thirty-five thousand in the cities of Porterville and Tulare. Redevelopment, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars in Porterville, Tulare, Cutler-Rosy, Ivanhoe, and Early Mart. It is also recommended that if any additional NSP funding becomes available at a later date, that the county authorize the application for and/or acceptance accept funds up to six hundred and ten thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Any additional NSP funding will be used in accordance with the funding requirements by the State of California NSP program. Tier Three funding, which is twenty-five percent of the state's initial NSP allocation, will be distributed to cities and counties that can meet HUD's requirement for housing targeted to households at or below fifty percent of the area median income. This is the first of two required public hearings to solicit public input on this allocation and any future application. An additional or second public hearing will be conducted prior to submitting an application for Tier Three funds and will fulfill the citizen participation requirements for that program. As indicated previously, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to ask questions and encourage citizens to express their points of view. We have invited members of the public to submit written comment to the Tulare County to County of Tulare Resource Management Agency Community and Development Redivision or Division at five-nine-six-one South Moonee Boulevard. In addition, information and supporting documents are also on file at that address between the hours of seven-thirty a.m. and five-thirty p.m. on Mondays through Thursdays and between eight and twelve p.m. on Fridays. Citizens will be advised of program progress on an annual basis at a public hearing scheduled for that purpose. No one will be displaced as a result of these activities. All Tulare County NSP activities will be implemented in ways that are consistent with the county's general plan and commitment to fair housing and equal opportunity. Applicants are not and will not be discriminated against on the basis of race, color, ancestry, religion, national origin, gender, marital status, or physical handicap. That concludes the presentation. Thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you. As you can tell, this required reading in of the public document, so thank you. Are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Wonderful program. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Unanimous. Thank you, and good luck. We'll now adjourn as Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as Tulare County Redevelopment Agency as we move to item number nine, which is a request from Resource Management Agency to authorize a commitment expenditure of Tulare County Redevelopment Agency funds in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from several areas. We will now hear the presentation from RMA staff.
Item nine is just a companion item to item number eight, and basically, we are requesting to commit a hundred and thirty thousand in redevelopment agency funds as leverage for the application, the NSP application.
These are our matching funds for the four million plus.
Correct.
Okay. This is not listed as a public hearing, so we will-- if anyone would like to address the board, I'll allow that. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item? Any questions of staff? Bring it up to the board for action then.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Vanderpool.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Innes. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. I'm looking for Kathleen Bell's Lang. I think she stepped out. Our next item is a we will adjourn as Tulare County Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as Tulare County Board of Supervisors, and we will address item number ten, which is a public hearing, a request from Resource Management Agency to not do deny the appeal filed by Jan Con of Con Source and Conway for Mike Ribero for special use permit PSP zero-five-zero-six-zero. Jake, are you going to be our presenter this morning?
Just to make one announcement, I was advised by the county council that the applicant has requested a continuance of the public hearing due to his conflict with the court date today. So we wanted to present that to the board first to see if you're willing to consider a continuance or if you would like us to continue with the public hearing.
I think we've we've listed this as a public hearing. I think it would be my intent, unless the board disagrees, to open the public hearing and leave it open to hear from the applicant.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. We could dispense as far as I would believe with the staff report today because we'll have to have it again in the future and just open up the public hearing for people who want to make public comment and then continue the matter to the later date.
I do I see a knot of heads from the supervisors to proceed in that manner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we will not have the presentation by our staff, but we will open the public hearing. The public hearing will remain open as we continue this item, but I will at this time open the public hearing. Any people that have come today wishing to address the board on this item may come forward, state your name and address for the record, remembering that we will continue this public hearing. It will it will remain open until we pick another date, which I hope our county council has received for us. Do we have-- so is there anybody wishing to address the board at this time? With the understanding that the public hearing will remain open as we continue the item. County council, do we have a requested continuance date?
We do, Mr. Chairman, from Jan Con representing the appellant in this case. There was attorneys would refer to as a scheduling snafu. Mr. Con has accepted the responsibility with his staff for that occurring, but asks that the matter be continued so that he can appear. He is actually appearing in another matter as we speak.
We have a requested date, so because we have folks here that have come to address this item.
Sixteenth.
June sixteenth.
June sixteenth.
Move move to continuous matter to June sixteenth.
Second.
Cast your votes. Well, this item will be continued to June sixteenth. Public hearing remains open. We will now move to our untimed items. We have item number fifty-one, which is a request from our County Administrative Officer to deny the bid protest from Friar Roofing. We'll ask for our staff presentation at this time. And folks, we apologize for making you wait, didn't know that this was going to happen until just now.
Good morning. Ted Phipps, Capital Projects Coordinator. At the May nineteenth, two thousand nine board meeting, Capital Project staff brought before your board the request to award the Government Plaza Roofing Project to Tri-County's Roofing. During the meeting, Friar Roofing presented a protest to the award. The protester provided comments that the substituted GAF roofing material was an inferior product to the Duralast or the Sikasarnafil material specified in our bid documents. He also stated that the GAF Evergard roofing material has a history of failures and that HPG, the supplier of the roofing material to GAF, had filed bankruptcy and that would have a direct impact on GAF's twenty-year warranty. Your board voted to continue this item until today's meeting and directed staff to review the protester's concerns. Capital Project staff diligently reviewed this information with our roofing consultant, Architectural Roof Design Group, and requested written responses from GAF Corporation on those stated concerns. Upon completion of our extensive due diligence process and review of all documentation obtained, including Mr. Friar's email of five-twenty-seven oh nine, Capital Project staff still finds that GAF Corporation Evergard roofing membrane to be an equal product to our project specifications, that HPG filing bankruptcy in no way will affect GAF's ability or obligation to fulfill contractually or financially back the twenty-year warranty for this project. And if the GAF Evergard product has a history of failures, it would be common knowledge in the roofing industry and would typically end up as a clax action suit. Capital Project staff and our roofing consultant, who does have the pulse of the roofing industry, cannot find any evidence to the long history of failures stated by Mr. Friar. Capital Projects has installed a GAF single-apply roofing system on our Lindsay DPSS building in June of two thousand seven and on the nineteen-seventy-six portion of the Visalia Library in October of two thousand eight. Both roofs have performed to project specifications and to expectations. Therefore, it is Capital Projects recommendation that your board take the following actions. Deny the bid protest from Friar Roofing Company and award to Con-- deny the bid protest from Friar Roofing Company, and award the contract for the Government Plaza Roofing Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Tri-County's Roofing Company, in the amount of $233,691, and authorize the chairman to sign the construction agreement upon receipt of certificates of insurance, bonds, license verification, and contract subject to review and approval as to form by county council. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Before we go to questions, I do have one slight disclosure to make. Many years ago, 10 years plus, I was working as a sheet metal contractor, have performed work for both these contractors, and actually, many of the contractors listed on the project that bid, and have been satisfied, or was at that time satisfied, working for all of these contractors. Very good, reputable roofing contractors, but I do not have a conflict as the work I did for them was small dollar amounts in at least a decade ago. Any questions of board members or staff? We do have a request by Mr. David Friar to address the board on this issue under a public comments form. Mr. Friar?
Yes, thank you again. David Friar, Friar Roofing, Chief Executive Officer, Friar Roofing. We've been in business now for nearly 30 years. You know, I was asked when I was here the last time to submit documentation to shore up my, the allegations that I made. I did submit those to staff. I only learned yesterday that this information did not go to you folks. I did submit the information about HPG's bankruptcy, as well as some performance-related issues, and really, that's immaterial at this point. If, you know, if the, if staff has, as they say, done their due diligence, I will accept that. Although, when I did speak with staff yesterday, they could not recall who they talked to. I gave them phone numbers and names of individuals that they could contact, and they did not follow up with them, and they could not tell me who they did speak with. So, I'm accepting of the fact that they did their due diligence, but respectfully, I've got to tell you that what has, what I've seen occur here is, and I'll use the analogy of a car. You know, Tulare County and their architects specified a Mercedes. It's a, it's a great roof system. Either the Duralast or the Sarnafil is a, is a very good roof system. The low bidder took a chance, and, and, you know, the low bidder is a good friend of mine, but they took the chance of bidding the Chevy, and it was not documented in advance. The other bidders did not get an opportunity to bid the Chevy. My bid could have been more competitive had I bid the Chevy, but you didn't want the Chevy, you wanted the Mercedes. And so, it's, it's, while we could sit here and dispute, you know, the GAF representative is here, and I'm sure that we could dispute the performance characteristics of the product, but the simple fact is, it was not a fair bidding process, and I don't think that the people of Tulare County have been well-served by this. My recommendation, for what it's worth, would be to throw all the bids out, specify the Chevy, and let all of us have an opportunity to bid the Chevy. And, and I would venture to say that you would get a more competitive number, which would certainly be in the taxpayer's best interest, and I do not see that process being long involved. In one week, you could have your numbers, you could make your decision and move forward. You have weather on your side, you have time on your side, so I really don't think it's, the time element is really an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friar. Anyone else wishing to address the board this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or action.
I just have a question for staff. Mr. Phipps? Ted, would you? In the bid process, you, obviously, we had to specify certain requirements to be met by the bidder to be awarded this contract. Were those specifications met? I mean, did we request the Mercedes, as Mr. Friar mentioned, and got the Chevy? Or did we request a certain level, the Chevy, and got the Chevy?
In the bid specifications that we supplied to our consultant of what we were wanting as a product for this roof, from those specifications that we provided, they went out and were seeking products that would be matching that criteria. In our bid documents, we have given Duralast and Sikasarna fill, or equal, as the description. The GAF product that was submitted is considered an equal product. We do not see a Chevy versus Mercedes comparison.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Bring it back to the board then for action.
I would move to deny the bid protest and award the contract to Tri-County Roofing.
Second.
Moved by Ennis, seconded by Ashida. Unanimous, thank you. For, Mr. Friar, thank you as well. Okay, we'll now move to untimed item number 52, which is a request by Resource Management Agency to authorize Health and Human Service and Development to initiate the county's layoff process affecting the Resource Management Agency Custodial Division.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hal Cypress, Assistant Director, Resource Management Agency. As I've heard articulated in earlier reports and comments, that currently, right now, the state, the county, and the nation, we're all facing tough times. In, in the middle of tough times, it does require that tough actions and tough decisions be made, and this is one of those matters, in my opinion, that falls under a tough decision. The matter before you would result in a reduction of 14 positions in our custodial division, which represents 35% of the custodian positions. Of the 14 positions, nine are currently filled with staff. This, this action would result in a savings of $490,000, and also results after we reorganize our efforts in a significant reduction in service levels as being presented by this division. And so, that concludes my report.
Any questions of staff? The one question I have, sorry, this will, this triggers negotiations with their union representatives, is that correct?
I believe.
So, there will be negotiations beyond this action today?
Negotiations on the impact.
On the impact of those folks. Any other questions? Anybody wishing to address the board on this item? Although it is not a public hearing, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Chairman, as we found in Sacramento, we were there last week, and as we're know in consultation with our CAO, we are, we are dealing with difficult times in our own local budget. We anticipate greater impacts, again, the loss of almost, you know, $3.2 million that's a vented Williamson Act dollars and so forth. Decisions are being made that are difficult to be made, because we know it affects individuals and individual families, and it's not easy to do that. But, we recognize too, that we have a greater responsibility to the citizens of Tulare County to provide county services, and that we can afford, and that's what triggers all of these actions we've been taking, and so reluctantly, I would move to approve the recommendation.
Moved by Supervisor Worley to accept staff recommendation, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Cypress. Items 53 and 54, I would like to, if we can, take them together and make it a seamless process. First tier item 53, which is a request from Resource Management Agency to receive a report on the current status of the financial impact on Tulare County and the Williamson Act. That will take a separate act, those are separate action items. I would like to see if we could make this as seamless as possible. So, we'll first consider item number 53, receive a report on the financial impact of the Williamson Act program on Tulare County.
Morning, Chairman Cox, board members. I'm Ann Chapman, a planner with RMA, and this is Roland Hill, Assistant County Assessor. The assessor's office and RMA countywide planning have collaborated on these two reports that you're going to get on the Williamson Act program. Mr. Hill is going to present the first of the two. Vote him to him.
Thank you, Ann. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. I'm Roland Hill, Assistant Assessor, and to assist you in some difficult decisions you were referring to a little earlier, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, the loss of subvention funds and loss of the, you know, the Ag Preserve issue is a, is a key factor, and so, I think the idea here today is to give you some, some data, some ideas to, you know, the numbers that we might be looking at. So, we'll go ahead and start here. I think the summary is that the county tax revenues from the, from Williamson Act properties, talk about that, brief discussion on how the properties are assessed, we'll talk about some data illustrating the impacts of the subvention payments on revenue, fiscal impacts of non-renewal. This slide, the assessed values are recalculated annually. We had Mr. Kunkel here earlier, and I would like to thank them, because we use their crop report very, very much. It's a key data source for our annual revaluation of our Ag Preserve. We put together a, you know, a data source each year that has incomes and expenses and crop averages, and we use that because we are required by law to assess the Williamson Act properties on an income approach, and so, they are recalculated every year, and it's like a moving number. I mean, it changes every year due to the variety of, you know, the facts that even Mr. Kunkel talked about. We have gains and losses each year in different crop commodities. Expenses change, incomes change, crop productions change, and so, it, it requires an annual revaluation. It's quite a process. Considerations in that, in that valuation are the base year values of the property. Remember, under Prop 13 guidelines, properties have a base year value determined by generally, in this case, their, their year of acquisition. Considerations of the improvements that are on the land, specifically in the Ag Preserve, we would be talking about growing improvements, the crops. We do not value row crop any, any differently than just base, you know, the land, but we would be talking here about improved crops, such as tree and, tree and vines. The estimated rental values, another factor that can change on a, on a year-to-year basis, because we do it on an income approach, we have estimated rental values that we have to consider. And it, the annual changes in the crop values, which you see every year when Mr. Kunkel comes in. So, this is kind of a good segue to have him a little earlier, and then talking about this, it, it gives you an insight as to what we're talking about when we talk about the crop values. From the standpoint of, you know, giving you definitive numbers as to what, you know, the county is not going to get, or, you know, going to, going to lose out, it's difficult, because, you know, we've got thousands of properties in the Ag Preserve there. It's a moving target, they, those values can change every year on those factors that I just spoke about. And so, what we've got, we've got some case studies that we're just going to point out to you, give you some examples. These are actual properties, just picked at random. When Ann started doing her project and she asked for information, we didn't, you know, highlight or pigeonhole any properties, we just picked some at random. This particular graph, we've got, if you'll watch the cursor, this is a particular piece of property that, from the standpoint of the '08-'09 tax year, if it had been out of the preserve, this particular property had a 2008 base year, so that means that it sold fairly recently. The assessed value on it was $166,464. That is its, what we call market, or its Prop 13 value. If you take that 1% tax rate, and then the, the 16% estimated county portion, I'm having a hard time with my cursor here, pardon me, it equates to about $266 in general fund revenue, if it were not in the Ag Preserve. Now, under the Williamson Act, under the restricted approach, we call it the restricted approach, as it is restricted by the tax code to be done on an income approach, the Williamson Act value on it is, was $24,615, considerably less. It is a, quite a benefit to be in the Ag Preserve. When it was originally drafted, it was felt that if a property owner agreed to commit their property contractually into the Williamson Act, then there should be some benefit, and that benefit was a lesser tax, property tax. And so, you can see that based on this, the taxes, 1%, $246, so the general fund revenue on the restricted approach is $39. Now, when we get into the subvention aspect of it, under a full, I think, under the subvention, that WA is the subvention reimbursement for Williamson Act, WA. You can see that this particular property receives a dollar per acre subvention, or $160. So, the total, at $39, which we saw in column C there, that's my cursor, the $39, the $160, so we get $199 of general fund revenue off this particular piece of property, which means that on this piece of property, county's losing $67, because if we're not in the preserve, we'd be getting 266. Here, we're getting 199, so even in the preserve, we're losing some money on this piece of property. Once again, this can vary, it can change, and it, it, just, there's a lot of various.
I just ask a question. When you talked about the subvention, was this the subvention that we've been receiving after a 10% reduction, or was this based upon the full subvention?
This would be, I believe, Ann, correct me, but it would be the full subvention. This is based on, you know, full subvention.
Actually, there would have been a 10% reduction under our current situation.
In real life, yeah. The monies that came in, I believe, this last Friday, were 10% less than.
And another general question, is it, is it my understanding that when property changes hands, that the market value does not change? In other words, normally, when land sells, we get a new step to basis for property, whatever it sells for.
Correct.
Is that not true in Williamson Act contract lands?
Under, under the restricted approach, and if it's not in non-renewal, under the, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit, we have a slide on that. Under the restricted approach, that's correct, the, the change in ownership does not affect the valuation, because under the restricted guidelines and the tax code, we're to assess it on an income approach, regardless of its base year value. And so, a property can change hands, go through a change in ownership, set a new base for property, you know, Prop 13, but the restricted approach would not be considered with that.
And so, in your calculations, that was not considered?
In this particular, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Now, in this, in that, actually, this one has a 2008 base year, relatively recent base year. We've got, I think, a slide that shows a 75 base year, and then a step up with a, with a more recent sale.
So, that would probably mean that's when that contract was entered into, in 2008? Is that?
No, no, I'm talking now just a sale, just a transfer. Yeah.
What I'm saying is, if, if the market value base year is 2008, would that be because that was the year that they entered into a Williamson Act contract?
No, I'm referring now to a 2008 base year, that's a sale occurred, a transfer, that created a 2008 Prop 13 base year.
Oh, I, oh, I see.
Restricted values do not have base years.
Oh, I see, but I got you. The restricted value again is based upon, on income off.
That's correct. It's based on an income approach to value.
Great.
Yeah. This particular one, this case study two, is a comparison on a piece of property that you can see at the bottom part, the bottom part of the slide, this is valuations of the same property, but up until the point when it's sold, sold in 2005, we see that the, the assessed value up until the sale, old property value, 1975 base year, $63,324. I think this was a 160-acre piece, I'm not, so roughly, that created $101 of revenue to the general fund, at six, at that 16% of 1%. The Williamson Act restricted value was $26,587, and so, that created a $43 revenue, the general fund. fund. So this must have been a 239 acre, pardon me, because it, probably the dollar an acre for the subvention, it's $239. And so when we have the 43 and the 239, it's $282. So you can see that actually on this one, the county had a net gain of Williamson Act tax revenues, 282 minus the 101, so we actually had a net gain. However, we see that what happens, when we have a transfer, this particular property sold, creating a 2005 base year, and so if it had not been in the preserve, we would have collected roughly $382 of property tax, general fund. The Williamson Act value, 27,609, created a $44 general fund, actually, plus the subvention dollars. And so here, on this particular one, we now are at a $99 net loss.
That's the same piece of property?
Same piece of property. It's just that we had a stepped-up Prop 13 tax base when it sold, and so...
I guess I would call that the phantom gain then, down below.
Well, sure. I mean, this is, this is showing you what it might collect if we're not in the preserve, and what it, what it actually is getting. Because we thought there might be some questions as to what happens with different commodities, once again, bear in mind, these are moving targets, and so we've got four different parcels, picked at random, just with some different commodities on them, showing you what the column, column A, market value, it's actually the Prop 13 values we're calling market, column B is what the Williamson Act assessed, what actually got on the tax roll with the assessment. Just to give you some graphic, you know, indication as to the difference that can occur between market value, Prop 13 values, and the Williamson Act values. And as explained earlier by Mr. Kunkel, you know, we've got good years, bad years. You can see that this particular one, especially with the oranges, that parcel two, showing the assessed value of the growing improvements, this was for '08-'09, so it reflected, you know, some freeze damage, and so we had a very low, you know, growing improvement value on the restricted approach done on an income basis. It can, it is possible that under the restricted approach, that the restricted valuation, Williamson Act valuation, can actually exceed the market, the Prop 13 value, the market value. That has happened, it can occur, especially if there are old base year values. When that happens, the county has instituted a 423 rule, 423.3, I believe it is, and I don't, that gets a little more complicated, I don't know if we ought to go into that, but there is some subvention then, based on the fact that if Prop 13 value gets enrolled, if it's, if it's the lesser, then there's a further reduction of 10% of the assessment, and then subvention is obtained off of that. And once again, I just keep, I know I sound like a broken record, but this can change on any given year because of the market dynamics, the income and expense dynamics, the income approach can change, and it does. Table one, to the best that we could calculate, if the properties that are currently in the assessed, currently in the ag preserve were assessed, where is my cursor? There it is. If they were out of the ag preserve, would have about $3.5 billion of market value. That would equate to a county revenue of about 500, probably 5,600,000. What actually happened, this is for '08, this is '08-'09 data, what actually happened, we had an assessment of about 1.3, 1.4 billion, and with the county revenue including, now this is including the subvention, see, so, you know, the county revenue even with the subvention, we still were down about $343,000.
Roland, if I might just make an observation about this slide, I think it's very significant. Our expectation is, based upon not only last week being in Sacramento, but prior to that, because this Williamson Act subvention has been in the headlights of the, I know this administration from the very get-go, we've had to fight every year to try to keep subvention in place.
Yes, sir.
But this, this slide illustrates why the state wants to get rid of the subvention. And it's not, it's not just about the subvention payments that are made out of the general fund to the counties, it's the fact that all the other governing agencies that receive property tax would see an increase in their tax revenue, which would reduce the obligation of the state. For instance, education is the number-one recipient of property taxes. There is no, they get a subvention because whatever the difference is between, excuse me, whatever the difference is between property tax and what the, whatever they're going to give per student, the state makes up to backfill the difference. In this case, by increasing that tax revenue to schools, it reduces the obligation of the state a considerable amount. So our expectation is, I think we have to plan going forward, is that the subvention will go away, and it will not come back, because there's a huge impact to the state overall budget, and it's not, again, it's not just the subvented dollars that come back to the counties, it's the fact that there's all these other dollars that they would be able to collect on that are not being collected, primarily for education. So I think this slide tells a very important tale in our decision-making process.
I think what this slide clearly shows is that you'd have to raise the property taxes by $21 million on our farmers to get the same amount of money. That's what it shows to me.
Table two, just kind of, we're trying to give some graphic, you know, evidence of the estimated increases in the assessed value, because what happens, I mean, I agree with you, Supervisor Worthley, I think we're probably going to see the demise of the ag preserve and the whole system unless the county wishes to, you know, subvent the whole thing and carry it. But when a property goes into non-renewal, it's our understanding that the subventions cease, even in a good year, even under a normal year when we might get it, the subvention cease for that particular piece of property. And then it goes through a stage of nine years, it's a 10-year, and so on the 10th year, it's actually out, but it goes through a stage of nine years that we go through a non-renewal process. And that calculation is kind of a convoluted one, but it, it takes a very large jump. We show that here in year one. It's not, it's not a, an automatic, it's not a given that it's a 40% increase the first year, but it's very, it's very close, and it, it kind of centers around that number. It's a very large increase in assessment the first year of non-renewal because of the computations, because you're blending now, you're blending a restricted value with the Prop 13 values. But then, it's a very gradual phase in for the next eight years. And this shows the, kind of what happens. We can see that for '08-'09, that 1.3 billion was the estimated value that we, best number we could figure was the assessed value for all the ag preserve properties on a restricted approach. And then you can see what happens in the following, the next, you know, succeeding eight years. Basically, what it's telling us is that it takes about, I mean, we get, we have to go into the eighth year before the county actually starts seeing any positive number in the assessed value. So it takes a long time, it's going to take a long time for the county to recoup and get back to a, you know, a position of assessment where we're, you know, showing more than we would have had we, you know...
The difference, though, here is that your projection would be that if the subvention were to stay in place, and it actually has worked as sort of a golden handcuff in the past, you didn't want to trigger, because if you triggered a non-renewals, a county, you immediately stopped the subvention.
The subvention, on that, yes.
If the subvention stops anyway, there is no penalty from that point of starting a non-renewal process, because you're not getting the subvention anyway.
Correct, but, yeah.
You know, so in the, in the course of things that's been over the last 20, 30 years, had the county started a non-renewal, then you're right, it would take year eight before you finally perhaps break even. But in this case, where we lose, your calculation is based on the...
Well, we still lose, you know, we still lose assessment, because even, you know, disregarding the subvention issue, when we go into a non-renewal, we can't just take that property and put it at its Prop 13 base year.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand.
And so we have a...
But you're gaining 40% of what you have...
We're making up a considerable amount of it that first year.
Right.
And then it's a gradual...
Right.
Yeah, recovery over the next...
So what I'm saying is that the subvention is a critical, in the past, you know, the county might look at, gee, we're losing $343,000 a year, you know, that's $343,000 we could get by doing a notice of non-renewal. Well, if you gave up the subvention, you had to figure, well, heck, you're cutting off your nose to bite your face because you're giving up $4 million in order to get, at the end, an additional 3.4, 343,000. It didn't make sense. But if you don't have a subvention to begin with, it's a whole different...
Then I don't know, there's no other alternative. So, you know...
If I can, real quick, because I looked ahead to the next slide. If you look at the bottom piece there, that's two years of subvention, so we're looking at two years or eight years, you know, so for me, and I understand Alan, Supervisor Ashida's point there, is you're looking at increasing the property tax to farmers who are already being hit by $21 million.
It's a great hit on agriculture from the standpoint of additional expenses and property taxes, no question about it. Just as a summary, the tax assessments on these Williamson Act properties are calculated on individual properties, are done individually on an income approach each year. We saw that '08-'09 represent that $343,000 approximate loss to the county. If, now, obviously, the bullet point, if the subvention payments by the state are discontinued, the county's going to lose considerably more than that, tune of about 3.4 million. The non-renewal results in a loss of subvention payments while tax assessments increase over the, you know, the nine-year non-renewal period, and then the non-renewals of all Williamson Act properties would result in about a $6.6 million loss in revenues before tax assessments reach a break-even point, and that was shown in about year seven to eight.
But in other words, a $6.6 million loss or $34 million loss, which is the lesser of two evils, the way I look at it.
So it's, I know, it's a difficult decision for you. I know we went through this very quickly, but I think a lot, you know, it's just some graphical evidence show what the assessments, the differences between the restricted and the market. If I can answer any ag preserve-related questions, that was the reason why, I mean, I'm here assisting Anne, you did a great job in putting this together, crunched a lot of numbers, did a lot of work, and I was here to kind of add some credibility to any answers that might be asked about the ag preserve, some specific assessment questions.
First, I want to thank you for the presentation. I know it was, I don't even begin to know how much work it was, I just know that it was a tremendous amount of work, and it was information that the board had requested and that, to my knowledge, we've never really had before to have kind of this overview of what the implications are.
And I could come in next year and the numbers would change, you know, because this is a, you know, a fluctuating factor.
I did have this one question, I think I know the answer, but it appears that there's more work involved in the assessor's office of calculating property taxes for Williamson Act contract lands than for non-Williamson Act contract lands.
Yes. We spend a considerable amount of time each year putting the data together. We do have the capability, the data processing capability now with the ag preserve module that does the bulk of the, you know, the number crunching and things, but there is a great deal of data entry, data collection, gathering.
And so my follow-up question was, was there any calculation...
And it's going to get worse in non-renewal. The non-renewal is, I start to go into some type of shock when I think about doing every property on a non-renewal basis.
I guess, but my, oh, I see what you're saying there, there's extra work for that.
Yes.
But if you were to compare that, you know, so 10 years from now, when there is, if there were no more Williamson Act contracts, what would, have you done the calculations? I mean, how much time, energy, are we talking about, full-time equivalent, half-time equivalent, or something in terms of...
No, we haven't, sir.
But there would be a savings, I assume, then?
There's going to be a period of, we've, I would be able to give you some information, I don't have it, but we would certainly save some in, some staff time, yes.
10 years?
Mm-hmm.
For 10...
That's right, it's not short.
I did want to recognize Mr. Hardcastle.
If you, that's right.
We do have Mr. Hardcastle in the audience, doesn't have a big smile on his face, but it's good to have you here, Craig. So we do, this is split into two pieces. The first piece is to accept this report, and then the second piece, which would be item 54, would be to consider our options. So this time, I will consider a motion to accept the report, and then we'll move into our options.
And there's still, I think Anne may have had a second part to this, though...
Well, the second part is 54, though, correct?
Okay.
Right. So we'll take action on item number 53, which is to accept this portion of the report.
I would move for approval to accept the report.
Moved by Anne, a second by Ashida. If that's unanimous, we'll now move into item 54, which I believe are our options.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Senator Nastada, thank you, Roland.
Good morning, Chairman Cox and Board members. I'm Anne Chapman, Planner with RMA. I will now present Section 2 of our Williamson Act report. This has to do with options for the work program for the upcoming fiscal year.
Anne, can I interrupt for one second? I need to confer with counsel.
Okay.
Do we want to adjourn to closed session for a few minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're going to adjourn to closed session for five to 10 minutes. On this...
This is a notice. We'll be...
Well, we had, we sold about 10 acres way before we went back, we had like 17 acres. We kept five acres.
Oh, thank you, Jake, thank you.
I don't think that's, I don't think that security gate's working that well. I don't know.
Hey, Jake.
Yes, you do.
Hey, thanks for the cookies. Thanks for the cookies, man.
If I could make a correction, I announced we were going to closed session, we did not go to closed session. Supervisor Ashida needed to confer with counsel, so we did not go into closed session, we took a short break so that Supervisor Ashida could confer with county council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, and on information that the council received, I have to recuse myself from this action because I have a Williamson Act contract, so I will be joining the audience.
The first option is county-initiated nonrenewal of Williamson Act contracts on substandard parcels. Option two would be county-initiated nonrenewal of all Williamson Act contracts should the state's subvention payments be discontinued. Option three would be a moratorium on new agricultural preserves. And option four is other strategies to reduce fragmentation of agricultural lands. Option one, county-initiated nonrenewal of substandard parcels. These are parcels that do not meet the minimum size requirements for the program, or they're located within an urban development boundary, or they have non-approved land uses, non-agricultural This table shows the categories of substandard parcels in the Williamson Act program. That would be prime, acreage less than ten acres, non-prime parcels, less than forty, farmland security zone parcels, less than ten acres, and parcels within an urban development boundary. Altogether, this would account for twenty-five thousand acres. I will look at this. We've got acreage Williamson Act values of these properties, the lost subvention revenue if we non-renew, the estimated taxes received, the general fund for the Williamson Act values on these properties, and what the taxes would jump to in year one of nonrenewal. Also, these would be the estimated taxes at full market value, which would come after nine years of nonrenewal. So, you can see that the lost subvention funds would amount to a little over seventy thousand dollars. The tax revenues under Williamson Act are something over four hundred thousand dollars. In year one of nonrenewal, these would jump to seven hundred nine thousand five hundred eighty dollars. And by the end of the nonrenewal period, it would be well over one million dollars in revenue. So, we make up the lost subvention revenue almost immediately on these particular parcels. Option two, if the state discontinues subvention payments, the county could consider county-initiated nonrenewal of all Williamson Act contracts. This would have major impact. This is a program that has over one million acres currently enrolled in the program. There are currently over thirteen thousand parcels that are active. That means they're not already in nonrenewal. And there would be over six thousand contracts that would need to be canceled, probably over nine thousand owner contract combinations where people would require letters. You saw this table in Mr. Hill's presentation. I just wanted to review the Williamson Act revenues should subvention payments be discontinued. The county loss would be over three point four million dollars in tax revenue. With the subvention payments, the loss is three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars plus a bit. This subvention payment amount is the ninety percent that we actually receive. Option three would be a moratorium on new agricultural preserves. This would impact few parcels, probably. Last year, we had four new agricultural preserves. We do not have a large number of preserves coming into the program.
There's no, there's few applications pending, then, is what you're saying?
Yes. And option four includes strategies to reduce fragmentation of agricultural lands. These could include requiring larger minimum parcel sizes for Williamson Act lands, a prohibition of further subdivision of Williamson Act parcels, removing homesite parcels from Williamson Act lands, or adopting other changes such as agricultural zoning or changes to the rural valley lands plan.
Now, it was my understanding that homesites were already removed from the Williamson Act.
Homesites are sometimes removed officially, sometimes unofficially. They are not assessed at full Williamson Act, I mean, full market value.
Assessors here, and perhaps can speak to his practice, that the-
That's one of the things I've heard.
Homesite is usually carved out and assessed separately.
Homesites are always carved out and assessed separately.
If that's chosen by the property owner. A lot of times, people have homes that have existed on farm property, and they're not carved, they're not carved out as a separate parcel.
Roland Hill again with the assessor's office. Yeah, the homesite issue, under the restricted valuation guidelines, if a property is in the ag preserve, has a residence on it, we will pull out a typical homesite value, maybe a half acre to an acre, acre and a half. That, that piece, that portion does not get restricted approach. Under Section 428, we apply a market value to that piece. But it's still in the preserve.
Right.
You know, but it's just not getting an assessed valuation benefit because it's a homesite. But-
What you're, I think Phil's referring to is, or Mr. Cox, is when, when people go about creating a separate parcel for that homesite, then we require them to file a notice of nonrenewal on that, on that small piece of property to ultimately-
Right. I believe that is now a current RMA policy. That's correct. That wasn't the case for years and years and years.
Right. Thank you.
Do you have a question, Mr. Russo?
So, does that mean they receive two tax bills?
No, sir. No. All in one, but it's just, just another assessment snag in the calculation. You know, we have to maintain a basure value for the homesite. It's assessed on the Prop 13 approach and not the restricted approach for the homesite portion.
Right. Just to review our options, option one, county-initiated nonrenewal of Williamson Act properties that are substandard. Option two, county-initiated nonrenewal of all Williamson Act contracts if the state's subvention payments are discontinued. Option three, a moratorium on new agricultural preserves. And option four, a series of strategies which could reduce fragmentation of agricultural lands. Staff recommends, option A, research options one, three, and four. These would be the county-initiated nonrenewal of substandard Williamson Act lands, a moratorium on new agricultural preserves, and strategies to reduce fragmentation of agricultural lands. We recommend deferring decision on option two until the state budget has been approved. And we would request other direction from the board as deemed appropriate. That ends my talk.
As I look at this, and I look up the option B on the final slide showed, which basically says defer decision on option two until state budget approval, I don't know why we would do much more work on anything if the state were going to discontinue the subvention. And early on, you said, I wrote down, discontinue, and on your first slide, it says canceled. Now, I don't know how it's worded in the state budget, if it's discontinued, deferred, or if it's canceled. To me, that's, that's an important question to know, how do we proceed? I agree with Supervisor Worley. Once they take it away, it's probably gone, but they can defer, defer, and I don't know how many years they can legally defer before they say, oh, well, we're not going to pay you back altogether. But that's a concern of mine is, are they recommending deferral, discontinuing, canceling? What is the state's position? Because now I know it's not to be funded this year, but does that mean they're deferring payment? You know, that would be important to me to know before we move.
I'll give my shot at it. Somebody can correct if I'm wrong. Deferrals are a situation where the state has an obligation to pay something, and they choose, say, we haven't got the money, so we're going to pay you, but right now, we're going to defer it till a future date. There is nothing that obligates the state to pay the subvention. The subvention dollars are not tied to the Williamson Act itself. In fact, apparently, some counties opted not to go into Williamson Act because they feared this day would occur. Apparently, part of the incentive for counties like Tulare to go into the Williamson Act contracts was the subvention money from the state of California. Other counties foresaw, perhaps, that this day of reckoning might occur, and so they did not go into Williamson Act contracts. My understanding is, they're not talking about deferrals, they're talking about an elimination, that there will be no more Williamson Act subventions. And I think, again, it would be difficult to bring it back in light of the fact that it's not just the money that's paid to the counties, it's the lost revenue that would go to schools, that would reduce the state's obligation under Prop 98. That would make it extremely difficult to bring something like this back once it disappears.
And one question that I have, too, that's, we're going to have to wait and see how it pans out, is, yes, the state may eliminate the Williamson Act subvention funding, how are they going to eliminate the program altogether as a part of that effort?
Well, the program is our, the program is the county's contract with the farmers.
Their contract law is such, you cannot just be, they could, they could say, we're going to eliminate the Williamson Act as legislation, but it would still be subject to the ten years of the contracts. I mean, contract law says you have to allow these contracts to play themselves out. Once they're played out, they could, of course, they could eliminate the program. It's hard to know why the program would exist at the state level. I mean, why would anybody participate in it, if you, really? I mean, one of the things I have to think about, too, is that the Williamson Act was predated Prop 13. One of the great incentives for the Williamson Act was where people's property were being assessed at current market values, especially those that were close to cities, and they were being assessed as potential development properties. And so, they got a higher assessment immediately. With Prop 13 came along and restricted the, the amount of increase and the rate of the increase, I really question whether the Williamson Act would have come into existence in a post Prop 13 world. But it predated Prop 13, and so it was the only way to prevent, at that time, the only way to prevent people from going out of business, into ag business, who were situated adjacent to city limits.
Do we know if they eliminate the subvention, are they also going to eliminate their fee, their cancellation fee that they'll receive over the next ten years while the properties are still, are falling out of the subvention?
That has not been addressed so far in discussions. I have been looking for it because, as you know, I drafted some legislation to provide that the county should get that fee rather than the Department of Conservation.
That could play heavily in our decision. That could be, that could be an offset.
Right now, everything that I have seen, including as we've been sitting here today, is the state deciding to pass off their expenses to the counties. For example, apparently, if someone is sentenced to six months in prison or less, you're now going to keep them in your jail at your own expense. I don't see any, I haven't seen anything that would indicate that they're looking to give us any money.
Yeah. What is the deadline for notice of nonrenewal?
October 2nd.
October 2nd. So, we have till October 2nd to decide, which is most likely we'll find out what the state's going to deal with its budget at that time. So, the first year, so October 2nd's the deadline in the first year where the values go up forty percent would be the following, most likely, the following roll year.
Right.
Because they're not going to have time to do that. So, we would miss out on three point one next year and receive forty percent in 2010, 2011.
Well, and I have one question. I know this isn't a public hearing necessarily, but I would like to hear from the Tulare County Farm Bureau, Tricia Stever, and hear what she has to say about this Williamson Act idea. Tricia, if you don't mind.
Well, and while she's coming up, I think the idea here is this is more informational. This is, this is not an action item today. We're not going to, we're not going to do, and I think this, this requires a tremendous amount of study before the, this, this has been a longstanding, very effective program in Tulare County, and certainly, we want to give it the due consideration it needs before we would make a decision. But I have no problem, of course, hearing from Ms. Stever this morning or anybody else.
Thank you. Good morning. Tricia Stever with Tulare County Farm Bureau. Thank you for inviting me forward. I was merely here for fact-finding as well. Jean invited me to sit in this morning, and I appreciate the heads up that this was taking place. Very, very informative information from both the assessor's office and from Ms. Chapman, so thank you very much. Certainly, we appreciate that you're exploring a myriad of options. There's not going to be any easy solution to the situation. You're one of the largest counties in the state that utilizes this program, and Fresno, right next door to us, obviously, has a great amount at stake in the outcome of the subvention payments as well. It's unfortunate that this has been an issue of cry wolf for many years. These subvention funds come up many, many times for elimination, and sometimes, it's hard to be Farm Bureau, always saying, we got to save them, we got to save them, and then they magically always end up in there the next year. But I think we certainly know that at this time and place, the state is truly in a dire situation, and I concur that probably, once these are eliminated this year, they're not coming back. And certainly, my Land Use Committee, I think, would really benefit from maybe hearing a pared-down version of the same presentation today. They'll meet later in June, and so I'd like to maybe come back before you after that discussion and when you decide to actually make this an action item, which may not be until sometime in September, October, when you know where the state budget lands, certainly would be very willing to weigh in on this and give you our best judgment of what, which one of those alternatives we think is, is in our best interests as producers and landowners and can work, you know, collaboratively with you as well. I think I heard a good argument today that initiating nonrenewal on every parcel in the county has tremendous implications in terms of the staff burden on our assessor's office and a number of other challenges that that brings forth, plus this nine-year, you know, delay in terms of breaking even. So, I'm not in favor of option two at this point in terms of Farm Bureau's position, but certainly doing some further diligence on options one, three, and four, I think all would at this time be supported by Farm Bureau. So, thank you.
All right. I would be interested to know, too, the cancellation fee. If the state gives this up, if the cancellation fee were to come back, that's going to make all of Roland's numbers obsolete because there would be some type of calculation of the, if the cancellation fee is-
No, no, what you're, I think you may be misunderstanding. The fee that we're talking about is if somebody essentially terminates the contract. Cancellation is, is within the provision of the contract, so that's not, that's not canceling. You're saying we're giving notice that we're not going to renew the contract, and otherwise, it's always a ten-year, evergreen.
I'm talking about the owner canceling. When the owner cancels, there's a cancellation fee.
But when the owner cancels, there's a cancellation fee. And that is dependent, then, on the exercise of that, which has traditionally only occurred when people looked at having a property annexed or developed within a city, and the city has not filed a protest on it. Now, with all the annexations that's taken place up until now, that the cities did do protest, I think they've probably exhausted all those. Most of the, most of the contracts that exist now outside city limits will trigger fees in the future. On the other hand, we know that in the current market, where a lot of cities have already adopted, have already annexed a lot of property to their land, they may be a number of years before they do any more annexations, or very few. But that was one of the arguments I had tried to make earlier was, in a kind of a, you know, if you're going to take away the subvention, at least you should give those cancellation fees back to the counties of origin because the only justification before was at least you were giving the subvention. If you're no longer giving the subvention, then why should you get that additional revenue? Well, you're, you're taking away the subvention, so we're hit with a property tax penalty, and then when there's a chance to recover some of that, you collect that, too, although I'm sure they'll see it differently in Sacramento.
You're making sense, you're making sense again. Stop it.
I know. I do want to say that politically, Williamson Act contracts do have pulled more than just on a partisan fashion. There are Democrats who also represent counties heavily impacted by the Williamson Act contracts. And so, there, I believe, will be still amounted an effort to try to keep the subventions in place in Sacramento. It's just that I think everybody believes if you're going to get rid of such things as healthy families and, you know, I mean, talking about wholesale eliminations of health human service-type programs, it's going to be extremely difficult to hang on to the Williamson Act contract subventions. But I did have this question for staff, and that is, does it make sense to begin a process of looking at nonrenewal of substandard parcels if, in the ultimate end, we end up with a nonrenewal of all properties? I mean, is that not a lot of work to go through and identify the substan-
You're making sense, you're making sense again. Stop it.
I know. I do want to say that politically, Williamson Act contracts do have pulled more than just on a partisan fashion. There are Democrats who also represent counties heavily impacted by the Williamson Act contracts. And so there, I believe, will be still amounted an effort to try to keep the subventions in place in Sacramento. It's just that I think everybody believes if you're going to get rid of such things as healthy families and, you know, I mean, talk about wholesale eliminations of health human service type programs, it's going to be extremely difficult to hang on to the Williamson Act contract subventions. But I did have this question for staff, and that is, does it make sense to begin a process of looking at non-renewal of substandard parcels if in the ultimate end, we end up with a non-renewal of all properties? I mean, is that not a lot of work to go through and identify the substandards and all that sort of thing? Whereas if in the end result, we're just going to do a non-renewal on, in total, it seems like we may be doing a lot of work for nothing. And that was one concern I had about beginning that process. Because prior to this, you know, I was of a mind, yeah, we got to go after the substandard because, like you said, we very quickly recovered the money. They really don't need to be there. They shouldn't be there, you know, anyway, so let's do that. But now the whole game plan has changed because we really feel like the subvention's going to be eliminated, so would we better off to kind of wait and see where that's going to end up and then make a, make a decision at that time?
I agree. Take the wait and see. Act, because we do have until probably September to act upon this. Any other questions, comments?
No, I just agree with you on that, and we'll know if they're going to take it away, they'll take it away, and at that time, then we can come back and think.
And one last thing is that, you know, the idea about talking about other options for protection of land, you know, Ag properties, I, I think that, you know, if, if the Williamson Act contract goes away, again, it's a 10-year process, so it doesn't go away immediately. But we also do have the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which is a great protection of Ag property as it is right now. And we know, we've talked about the need to review that and, and look at other things that we now have, maybe minimum parcel sizes need to be bumped up. I mean, I think that's a whole different subject, needs a whole different evaluation, and I really, really sort of see it separate and apart from the Williamson Act contract issue. Because one is just purely land use, the other is, is taxes. And the, the tax thing is, is going to be driven, I think, by the numbers. Land use is, is another matter altogether.
So I hear we'll take the wait and see. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to say something before we accept this presentation and probably adopt the wait and see position? Seeing none, then we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Well, let's wait and see.
That's your motion. So moved by Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
Second by Worley. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Sheeta's not voting.
Mr. Sheeta has recused himself and is in the audience. We will, at this time, I understand that Sheriff's Department would like to make a comment to a letter received in regards to item, an item on our closed session, which is item K.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Crystal Sullivan with the county council's office. Do you have a personnel matter that is set for closed session? Typically, counsel for the employee would appear publicly in a public comment, make any comments, but in this particular case, apparently they submitted a letter. We did have an opportunity to review that letter. The department president and Captain Hinesley was my chief witness and department representative at this hearing. In order to rebut the statements that are in the letter that you're going to be reviewing in closed session, I'd like to be able to address the board. In addition to that, you do have the full administrative record to review, as you know the case, in transcript for your consideration in closed session. So with that, Captain?
Captain Jim Hinesley with the sheriff's office. When you go to closed session, you're going to get a letter from the attorney. We did three days of administrative law judge hearing. Indicated in the letter was talking about video. You need to know that our staff put well over 70 hours of review, which in a three-day period when we had the hearing, it wasn't that much. It's an interpretation. The department, when we met, we supported the termination of this employee. We had a three-day hearing with an administrative law judge, and he supported that department's decision, and I would ask that the board take that administrative law judge's recommendation and our support of that recommendation in your thought process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have closed session items. County Council?
We do. Mr. Chairman, you have items A through P on your board's regular closed session and closed session addendum. Items A, N, and O are off agenda. In regard to item A, I wanted to state publicly that the county council's office represented the sheriff in the administrative proceeding below and will not be present in closed session or providing you with any legal advice regarding this matter. And I do not anticipate any announcements.
We will adjourn to closed session. We will adjourn to closed session at this time.
Yes. Mr. Rousseau will likely have an announcement.
I had a real.
Sorry.
Hi, this is Jean Rousseau. On June 2nd, 2009, regarding item K in closed session, the board voted five to zero with Supervisor Ennis making the first motion, and the second motion was Supervisor Sheeta. To uphold the administrative law judge's decision for dismissal. Thank you. I'll get better.